Meeting of the District 1, 721 Board of Education to order. We'll at sea. Everyone is here except Denny. That's it. And we'll stand and say the pledge. Okay, we don't have anybody for open forum. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll have the committee reports, policy.
We met and basically the changes were just a few minor wording changes and just matching MSBA's policies.
And Danny isn't here, so we won't have Southwest Metro or Special Ed. EPAC report. How about Community Ed?
Wellness, no.
Okay. And Early Childhood hasn't met, but I did get an email recently from Mary Bartusik and all of the initiatives that that committee has put forth. Buddy the Bookworm, Let's Play Saturdays, Daycare Provider Trainer Training and Support Group, and the Early Childhood website are all doing well. And now Superintendent's report.
Yes, first, I'm gonna start with the good news first here. We had, like to let everyone know that this past Saturday, our one act play, they finished in first place in the subsections, so congratulations to all the kids and Director Ben Teji on that. That's exciting as they move on to sections now, so that's a real positive thing. I'll be going to the Lonsdale Chamber Annual Meeting tomorrow night. Tonight actually is the New Prague one, but since we have a board meeting, I delegated that to Tony going on. Last week, Tammy and Denny, we both went to the MSBA conference, which it was a good conference, but got shortened up a little bit due to the weather. That sort of caused a distraction during the conference, but I guess that's the way it goes. So we had our second bad weather day last week. And just also for the public too, we've got taking board applications till this Friday, January 31st, so that's when it will close. And as of right now, we have one applicant for the position, so that's where things are at there.
Okay, and the first, first action and discussion item is high school US English Lit teachers' presentation.
So Maran asked us to come in and just talk about the book club books and how those went from first semester, since those books were new to the curriculum this year. And so I just wanted to remind us first of kind of the reasons why we chose to change the curriculum a little bit. So over the course of last year, we wanted, we were looking at the books that we had and looking at how people of race were often depicted, as well as who was being represented author-wise by these books. And we wanted books that were a little bit more diverse, as well as books that were more intriguing for students. And so we looked up and found these more current books that were written within the past 10 years mainly, as well as we also looked at research that looked at how choice often provides motivation for students and makes it more interesting for them to read the assigned works in class. And so that's where the book club rationale came from, as well as what we looked at. And just a reminder of the books, three of them were dystopian, so they were looking at a future that could be possible. So Ready Player One is a virtual reality future where this, the creator of the virtual reality world passes away, and there's this whole hunt to find this Easter egg, because then they get the control of that new virtual reality world. And it looks at kind of big corporations versus a smaller individual. Fahrenheit 451 is a future where reading books are actually banned and they burn books. And so it looks at this idea of censorship, as well as like slowing down, since that world moves really fast. And then the last dystopian one is Legend, which looks at this dystopian future that's more militaristic. And this kid that's seen as a legend is accused of killing one of the military personnel. And as the sibling tries to figure out what happens, she starts to learn the truth of their organization. And then the final book that we added was one that was realistic in case kids didn't want to read, you know, a futuristic book, and it was called All American Boys. It was actually written by two authors side by side, and it looked at a moment of police brutality and how the community responded, both from multiple perspectives. And so those were the books that we chose. And now we're just gonna share briefly kind of the responses we got from our kids in different ways. So my response is more observational. By the end of the whole book club setting, I had kids asking for the sequel of Legend. So this was one of the big books that a lot of my kids read, and it's a trilogy. And then actually a fourth book was added in. And so we ordered extra books from the sequel and the trilogy, and they went within a couple of days in my classroom. So kids were asking for the second book to continue reading, which is always awesome. I also have one kid in my class that is making his way through each of the books. So he started with Legend, then he moved to Ready, Fahrenheit 451, and now he's reading Ready Player One. So he's slowly making his way through all of the books that we have chosen for that first semester. And then the only other thing that I'm gonna share, and then my colleagues will share, is when I look at the scores for the discussions that we had on these books, the scores were a lot higher than some of the other scores that I've had. So like average of 8.5 out of 10, which shows just this invested interest in them, as well as the fact that they are reading and actually wanting to talk about these books.
And Matt, why don't you introduce, Matt and Natalie and Kristen introduce yourselves to the severance.
So I'm Mr. Stens.
Tell me what you teach too, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Matthew Stensrud, I teach mainly 11th and 12th grade at the high school language arts.
Yeah, my name is Kristin Shire and I teach US Lit. And what I wanna share is just some data that I've collected over the years that kind of sparked my interest in adding new books to our curriculum. So at the end of the semester, I usually give my students a survey, and I asked them one year, 2018 actually, about the two books we read in class. So the first one was The Adventures of Huckleberry Finn, and the second one was The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian. And I asked them if they read all of the book, some of it, or none of it. And with The Adventures of Huckleberry Finn, I had 18% tell me that they read all of the book. And for The Adventures of, or The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian, I had 58% say they read all of the book. And so that immediately just got my attention, because it told me we needed books that were more engaging. And I just took a survey in regards to the book club options that we've added first semester, and 74% reported reading all of the book. So that's a pretty big increase in the reading of the novel. Another question I asked them on this survey was what they would prefer reading, if they prefer the traditional whole-class novel, if they preferred having a selection of options that we provide like we did first semester, or if they preferred just reading their book all, like picking their own book, just whatever they wanted to read. And I had 53% preferred to pick those narrowed-down options. 35% wanted the freedom to pick their own book, and only 12% wanted that traditional whole-class novel. So that tells me too that we are really moving in the right direction.
I'm Natalie Nelson. I am kind of the newbie to this team. I primarily teach 9th and 10th grade, but they threw 11th grade at me this year. So this has been really fun though. Thank you very much for your support of our teaching in our classrooms. This has been an amazing year so far. I just have some handwritten student reflections with some anecdotes that I thought were very helpful to showing the statistics have some personality to them. So I'm gonna try to make sure I can read their handwriting too. This first student read All American Boys, and he said, "I felt that having the choice to pick between four different yet similar books was a smart choice, as it allowed us to get more involved in the book that we chose to read, as opposed to everybody reading a speech or a thing of writing that nobody is interested in." This person also read All American Boys, and she said, "I love this structure. It gives us limited freedom, but being in smaller groups made me more comfortable, and it made it easier to understand." This student said, "I like how we had smaller groups for book club, because it gave us choice, and I like that because we were forced to read To Kill a Mockingbird. I didn't find it that interesting, because I couldn't get into the book." The student said, "I thought that it was very beneficial to read All American Boys. It made me work a little harder, but I learned a lot. It made me take more responsibility in my work. It also felt like useful work, not just busy work." This student said, "I read Legend. I liked being able to choose what book I read. This way I had to figure out how my book demonstrated rebellion, which was our theme of all of these books. I also had to comprehend the book mostly on my own, choosing which book to read made me want to read it." This student read Fahrenheit 451, and she said, "I loved it. I feel having the book clubs and thought questions were great. My book confused me a lot every week, but my questions were answered during our book talks. It also felt very, it also felt very small group, and I could tell you made sure every group knew what was going on." "I really like how we got to pick the book. It made me enjoy reading it more, since it was my choice. I like how we use the book to show examples of rebellion." And then this last question, they, I just asked them to tell me what they thought was most helpful during the unit, and they said, these three said, "I think the book club was the most helpful. This is because I am not a reader, and this pushed me past my limits and really helped me get a better perspective on this class. Reading the book was most helpful, mostly because I actually enjoyed reading it, because it tied the rebellion into something that I can understand more than dead patriot language." And finally, this one says, "I think the book club meetings were the most helpful, not only looking at mine, but others' perspective on the book and this topic."
That's awesome. Have any questions or comments from the board?
How old were these kids, 11th graders? Do you have any statistics about which book they read the most? There was four, you had four of them, or just three, three or four?
Four of them. I think the vast majority of our students, I know I had most of my copies of All American Boys checked out. I don't know about the other ones.
All American, that's the nonfiction one?
That's the, it's fiction, but it's realistic.
Okay, realistic fiction, yeah.
I do feel like All American Boys and Legend were the top two picks.
I just think it's great that they have the option to choose a book, because if you have to read a book, you have to be interested, otherwise you're gonna just lose focus on it and get nowhere.
I was gonna add, why didn't they have choices when I was in high school?
Well, it's, it's like a lot of things in education. You have this tradition of always doing the same thing, Huck Finn, To Kill a Mockingbird. And there's been some controversy in some school districts that, because they're going away from that, whether the, I'm not sure if they're given choice, but I know there were some articles in the paper at some school districts, like a big deal about going away from that. But sometimes in education, we just keep doing the same thing. So I think it's great that you're given choice, because they always talk about the big three R's in education, you know, rigor, relationships, and relevance. And I think you're meeting, obviously, the relevance and the rigor. Obviously, and part of their job is the establishing relationships with the kids, which I know they do a great job at. So I think it's wonderful.
I would agree.
The survey regarding Huck Finn and how many students read it, did you follow the question with, if you didn't read the book, did you at least watch the movie?
No.
And I only asked that, because when we were in, when I was in high school, I had several of my friends that are like, "I'm not reading the book, I'm watching the movie." And I'm like, "You're missing so much of the book." But that's what they did, 'cause they didn't wanna read the book.
Right, right. And I, that's what I tell my students, I'm like, "It's not gonna help you to watch the movie, 'cause it's so different." Yeah.
As an avid reader, it's, it's always important to find something you like. But if you throw something like, I don't know, at 11th grade, how many kids are reading dystopian stories? If you put a new genre in front of them, then that's, you know, all it takes is one or two or three kids to start talking, and then pretty soon, you've got the grades coming up. It's like, "Oh, I can't wait to read this book," you know? At that age, most kids don't think of reading on their own, they'll wait for it to be assigned. But there's, you know, they're not reading Romeo and Juliet. It's like, okay, here's something I like. So have you given the thought at all to, is this gonna be the same books for the next couple of years? Or have you given any thought to switching genres year by year?
We've talked a little bit about continuing to look at more diverse authors, just to give some more representation, and to keep it, to make sure it's rigorous enough for 11th grade as well. I think we want the buy-in with reading for sure, but we also wanna challenge them to. And I think we've talked about, you know, how do Lexile levels play in? Matt teaches both of the honors courses, and so how do we add that extra level of rigor for honors students? But I know for sure, like the rigor for a lot of our students, and Rachel Harmon also teaches this class too, and she was ill, so she couldn't be here today. But she mentioned that it was just the mere fact of hearing from multiple students in all of our classes that they hadn't fully read a book since elementary school until this semester. Was very powerful, but yet also very humbling in the fact that we do have a lot of work left to do.
If I could add one thing, you just hit on a topic that I think is very important. Lot of times, I observe that we spend so much time trying to challenge the brightest kids, but I think it's even more important to engage the kids that are less, the ones that read less. Will help everybody in the long run, just like coaching sports, and the level of people on your team, whatever. So I would encourage you to keep that probably on the top of the list.
Well, Matthew, Kristen, Natalie, thank you so much for all you do. Appreciate it, and it was a very good presentation tonight, and I think we got a lot from it, so thanks for all you do.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Now we have a pay equity report.
Every three years, as a public entity, we are required to file a pay equity report with the State of Minnesota Department of Minnesota Management and Budget. And this was our year to do that. We did that last in 2017. And so tonight, I'm just asking for approval of submission. There, we basically submit data on each position that we have, what the points are for the position, what the pay is for the position, how many steps for the position, and whether they have longevity or exceptional service pay. In implementing, in submitting our report, we are passing the three required tests. However, we do not officially pass until we are notified by the department that we have passed the pay equity test. So our submission passed all the tests, but then they do an analysis, they do some comparisons to prior years, they follow up with questions. We may not know until October, November, or even December, whether we officially passed or not. Just asking tonight though, for your approval to, of our submission, and then when we officially pass, I'll let the board know.
Could I have a motion to approve the pay equity report?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next is approval of the proposed angel fund allocation procedure.
Yes, we met with, I met with the policy committee last, or two weeks ago, I'm not even sure. It was the Friday of the snowstorm, I think. Yeah, okay. And we have gotten quite a few more funds donated to our angel fund in the Nutrition Services Department. There's actually a large donation that you're approving tonight for $2,500. And when we first started the angel fund, you know, we'd get just a few hundred dollars here or there from parents that had graduating seniors, but nothing major. And so really only the, you know, students in dire situations were really eligible to receive any angel funds from the Nutrition Services Angel Fund. Now with the increased donations, we really need to have a process on how we distribute those funds. And we also now, that used to be held before GASB, the GASB changes that I talked to you about in June, it used to be held in a separate fund, but right now, with the GASB changes, it's being held in the general fund. And so in the general fund, it has to be a public purpose. So in calling our auditor, just to make sure we were, you know, doing everything correctly, he suggested we have a policy or procedure that the board has approved to be able to distribute these funds and not have a finding in our audit. So Kim Heron actually came up with these, this procedure. The policy that you looked at tonight, one of the policies was the lunch meal account balance policy. That policy will refer to an angel fund donation distribution procedure, and that is kept in the Nutrition Services office, and that, this will be that procedure. So basically, you know, they have a criteria, you know, first they give to a certain family or a certain grade, or whoever the donor wishes it to be done. Then you pay off meal debt for individuals that have been identified as homeless. Then you pay off meal debt from families who are requesting help due to financial difficulties. Then you're paying off debt for students from free and reduced meal. Maybe they had a balance from before, and we pay off those. Then we work with social workers and administrators to identify families in need. And then if there are funds left over, we prorate among the remaining negative balances. So just asking for your approval on this tonight, and we'll move forward and see how it works. But I think as people donate money, they want to know how it's being, how it's being spent. And it's important that we give them that information.
Could I have a motion to approve the proposed angel fund allocation procedure?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And the next is approval of substitute and temporary employee rates of pay.
Yeah, so after we settle contracts, as typically, we look at subrates of pay. And so just posted what, what, you know, I've worked with the administration, as well as payroll and human resources, to come up with these rates that would be effective February 1st, 2020. And we didn't see a need to update our substitute teacher. We feel like that's very competitive, but we did wanna update other rates of pay. So just asking for your approval on those.
Could I get a motion to approve the rates of pay?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And next is approval of the master agreement with 2019 to 2021 with New Prague Education Minnesota.
Yes, so we settled with the teachers back in early December, actually, but they just brought it to their teachers on January 20th. They voted on Thursday, the 24th, I think it is. And we're, they ratified it, and so now we're asking for board approval. Basically, it provides us a small increase for insurance in the second year of the contract. It provides a modest salary increase in the first and second year of the contract, and a change in the second year of the contract to discretionary leave as a pilot program for, for a maximum of two years, with the option for the teachers or the administration to opt out at the end of either one of those two years. And the process went very good with the teachers, very positive meetings. I don't know, Tim, if you wanna say anything, but we work very well together. This is the fourth contract.
Fourth contract, Sandy and I have worked with the Teachers Union and, yeah, there've been a, it's been, you know, neither side gets everything they want, but it's been very respectful and it's been very positive. That's all I'll say. I mean, I can't, can't complain. Of course, we hear other things from other districts, but we're fortunate to have, to work with the people that we're working with, Brian Triplet, Steve Curley, Jeff Decker, and Tim Ledwin. They do a great job.
Was the final, the final draft what we discussed the last time in the closed meeting, or were there changes after that?
No changes.
Could I get a motion to approve the master agreement?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is approval of the master agreement, 2019 to 21 with technicians.
Yes, this is the second to last contract we have to settle. Excuse me. Very similar to the other groups, where we had an adjustment to the bereavement based on a schedule, a salary increase in the first and second year, and a small increase to insurance in the second year. We made one change with their grandfathered severance language. They, before, were getting that in cash, and now it's gonna go into a tax-free vehicle. So the district doesn't have to pay fixed costs on it, so we increased that slightly. It doesn't cost the district any more money, and that has been sunset for many years. But we just, it's better for everybody if it's tax-free. And so we made that change. Other than that, pretty, yeah, the negotiations went very well, just two or three meetings, very positive.
Could I get a motion to approve the master agreement with technicians?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
And next we have a resolution to accept a donation from First Bank and Trust.
Oh, that's me. I would like a motion for the resolution to accept a donation for First Bank and Trust.
Make a motion. Accept the resolution.
Second.
You? Resolution to accept, a motion has been made and seconded for the resolution to accept a donation for First Bank and Trust. Whereas First Bank and Trust wishes to donate $2,500 to the angel fund, now therefore, be it resolved, the New Prague Area School Board of Education shall accept the donation under no conditions. How do you vote, Leo?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
The item passes.
And next we have a resolution to accept a donation from BTD.
It's easy for you to say. I would accept a motion for the resolution to accept the donation from BTD.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion, and it has been seconded for the resolution to accept the donation from BTD, whereas BTD wishes to donate $1,500 to the fishing club. Now therefore, be it resolved, the New Prague Area School Board of Education shall accept the donation under no conditions. How do you vote, Jean?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Oh, Kim?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Tammy? Yes, the item passes.
Okay. And now we have New Prague Education, Area Education Foundation Grant Approval. These are, we, there's an attachment that shows that Eagleview Elementary, the grant would, would be for tax screens in the amount of $278.40. And at Falcon Ridge, it would be used for electrical circuit kits for science in the amount of $1,469.30. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to accept the grants for these two items.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And the last item is to review the process for interviewing school board candidates on February 10th.
Okay, I posted to Board Docs the proposed process to follow. This has actually been, excuse me, posted on our website. Julie Schmitz has used social media to advertise it, and we- Julie Schmitz has used social media to advertise it, and we are starting to get some responses to that, to those posts. And basically, all application materials are due by 3:00 PM on this Friday, with very specific information in the application letter, answering questions that you'll be able to review the answers to, as well as a current resume. And just letting them know that anything that they submit will be considered public information. When we post the board agenda on Thursday, February 6th, we will have a list of the candidates. And decided to limit the number of candidates to be interviewed to six. Let's say that we got 20, we received 20 applications. I don't think we want to interview 20 applicants, that would take an awfully long time. So basically, the process would be, if there's more than six, then each school board member would be able to nominate one person to be interviewed. Maybe three interview this, or nominate the same person. But every, every school board member would be eligible to nominate one person, so it's a maximum of six. Don't know if we will have a, an issue with that. So far, we haven't, but just wanted to have a little bit of a fail-safe in there. And then at the conclusion of the interviews, the board will make the selection. And basically, comments would be kept very positive, focusing on the strengths. You'll have application packets for each candidate with the questions, and with an area to make comments, and have, you know, brief discussion. And then basically, someone, you know, would nominate a, one of the candidates. And, you know, we vote yes or no. If that person doesn't qualify, or doesn't meet, doesn't get the majority of votes, then someone else would nominate, you know, someone else. So we're just going to have to kind of play it by ear that night, to see how many candidates apply. And I'll have a lot, you know, I'll be able to give it, provide a little bit more guidance once we know how many candidates we have. And I guess it's a little bit open-ended. But the official appointment would be made at the February 24th board meeting, with the person sworn in on March 9th. Any questions at all on the process? Okay.
Thank you.
You're good?
Good.
Thank you.
Now can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And is adjourned.